Good evening. Good evening, good evening. This meeting will come to order. This is the zoning board of appeals, April 2016 meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Eggleston, Eggleston is still on leave. Mr. Chizola.
Here.
Mr. Haberman.
Here.
Ms. Ferrante.
Here.
Mr. Soto.
Here.
Mr. Vassino.
Here.
Mr. Dubois.
Here.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also Presidents Meg Green, our recording secretary, and Stephen Harris, our zoning officer. Just to let you know, this evening, item number three, 255 West River Street, has been rescheduled or tabled till May. Was that per the attorney?
Correct.
Per the attorney, okay.
Also, item number nine as well.
Sorry?
Also, item number nine has been rescheduled.
Yeah, I'm getting, I'm getting. Item number eight. Yeah, also item number eight, 62 Holly Avenue. That's also tabled per Attorney Willinger. And that's it. If anyone feels that there's a member on this board that might be a conflict of interest to their application, please let us know. Mr. Haberman.
Item number one, 41 Melba Street, Zone R5, Dave Salerno agent for Brian Lee owner, section four dash one dash four projections of 1.84 feet where eight feet permitted to increase deck to four feet times 23 feet instead of previously approved deck. Map 29, block 587, parcel 15.
Good evening. My name is Dave Salerno from Compass Builders, and I'm here to apply on the behalf of Brian Lee and Catherine Lee as we're working with, Brian Lee, there he is, as we're working with a property located at 41 Melba Street. The present two hardships that we have on the property right now is the lot requirement is 5,000 square feet and the present conditions are only 42, 4,288 square feet. And the lot width requirement is 50, and the present lot is only 29.89 feet. Mr. Lee, new house plan was approved already by zoning. This is just an adjustment to the plan. We're asking for, in summary basically, to increase the first floor deck four feet out closer towards the ocean by 23 instead of the previously approved deck. And we're also asking for the second floor deck to be presently four feet more than what it is right now, which is eight feet. Couple of things of notice. First, even with the changes, we are still 38.3 feet from the mean high water mark, and we are allowed to be as close as 25 feet. Secondly, even with the changes of the deck, we will not be as far out as the original house was. So the original house was 22.5 to the mean high water mark, and even with the changes now, we're only going to be 38.3 to the mean high water mark. We wanted to build the house in the way that not only didn't block the neighbors' view, but will also be farther away from the ocean to protect it from storm damages. Our hope was by adding the four feet from the first floor deck, it would allow us to add more room for the deck to add stairs. So on the original plan, we had shown stairs of being spiral stairs being built in, and after attempting with the spiral stairs, the felt a couple of issues. One, there were some health issues of their, Catherine's parents, and her mother getting up and down. And two, we had problems with the width of the stairs. So the treads of the spiral stairs as they get smaller as they go, and the height of the stair tread was issue. So these stairs would allow us to not only have a wider staircase from top to bottom, but would also allow us to adjust the stair tread from the height rise of eight inches down to a seven to seven and a half. The only variance that was needed is our side yard, Maron says we're not creating any other issues of lack coverage. I thought possibly it might make it easier when I'll distribute these, is I brought pictures showing from the ocean where the deck extends out to and kind of showing it from each sides of the property. If you go to the property now, which I'm sure many of you have, I built a deck right now that to be at 16 feet so you guys and the neighbors could see if it was approved, how far out it would be. The deck is not mounted right now at all, so if for some reason tonight we get turned down, then we know we can cut back. But I wanted to give the neighbors a true picture of what the deck would look like finished, so we're not misleading anybody. It's very important to my clients that their neighbors are happy in the situation. So I have pictures I'll pass out to you guys to give you guys a little idea. Two pages. The first page shows you from one side looking across, and the second page shows you from the other side looking down the strip. So it gives you one of each. That's all I have. Anything, any questions at all?
Who had approved the previous deck? It said instead of previously approved deck.
We had a house plan approved that came through zoning and was approved by zoning board and by CAM, both.
Questions for this gentleman?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's where it's, that's as far as it's coming out, correct.
And we need a hardship for this? We ask that question every time, but what is, what is the actual hardship for this?
The hardship that we're using is based on the lot being smaller size, which we got the house approved, and based on the width of the lot, too.
Go ahead, Mr. Soto.
And you said the upper deck is coming out two feet, two feet more?
Four feet more.
Four feet more, okay.
Yeah, same as the bottom deck. They wanted to stay in comparison, too.
Gotcha.
For the look.
Now, the way it's shown right now, where would the additional, where would the additional piece be added?
It, the way it's shown is completed. So what I did was when I built it, when we were framing the house, because the house is just framed now, so right now it's completed. So if, what I wanted to do was, it was only a few hundred dollars more of lumber to get a 16-foot long piece than a 12-foot long piece, so I put the 16-foot on there now, didn't anchor it down, but I put it there so neighbors and you guys could drive by and see what it would look like, so nobody would be misled saying, hey, why did you, you know, we didn't know it was coming out that far and getting everybody upset after the fact. So this, what you see right now, is exactly where, how far it's coming, no more than that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for this gentleman?
I do.
Go ahead, Mr. Vassino.
So are the stairs going up to the second level as well, or is...
No, sir.
No, okay. So, but yet you're adding four feet to that second level, you said, for aesthetic reasons?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is this, this, the house, and there was two pieces, there was two pieces, two properties, two houses, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
On this property. So we've had, heard this a few times. This is the end results. They built one house.
Correct.
So what do you think? Any, any questions? No, we're not discussing. Any other questions? Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Anyone here opposed? Anyone here opposed to this application? Any more questions? No? Okay, the hearing is closed. Okay, now it's time for your thoughts.
I don't have a problem with this at all, because I'll tell you, spiral staircase are very difficult to walk up and down, especially for older people, so this is a much safer way to go.
My thoughts are, we had been working on this, or they had been compromising on this property, and finally they did, so although I don't think there's a real hardship for it, I'm willing to, I'm okay with it.
I guess those were my two questions as well, Chairman. It's number one, I don't think the hardship really applies to adding on to a deck. And the other question that I had, which I mentioned, was if the stairway isn't going up to the second level, then they're just adding to gain space on to that second level, which I'm not sure is necessarily necessary.
Well, it is an egress also. Hey, we need a motion. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Approval is based on the hardship of the narrowness of the lot. We have a motion to approve. We have a second on the motion. Mr. Soto?
With the motion.
Mr. Vassino?
I'm against the motion.
Mr. Haberman?
With the motion.
Ms. Ferrante?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion. Passes.
Thank you for the time.
Item number two, 32 Field Court, Zone R5, Rafael Amaya, architect for Saul Englander and Patricia Englander, owners, section three dash one dash four dash one, east front yard setback to 4.09 feet where 20, where 10 feet required, 4.1.4, east deck to .34 feet where eight feet permitted, east deck and stairs to 4.26 feet where eight feet permitted. Construct a new single-family home, map 28, block 574, parcel six.
Good evening. My name is Rafael Amaya. I'm an architect. My office is located at 284 Racebrook Road in Orange. Following up on our last meeting a month ago in March 8, I am here tonight representing the state of Connecticut Department of Housing on behalf of Saul and Patricia Englander to my left. The residence is a single-family residence located at 32 Field Court in Milford on map 28, blocks 574, parcel six. This property is in Zone R5. Mr. and Mrs. Englander have owned this house since December 17, 1979. Once again, on October 22, 2012, their house was hit by superstorm Sandy, leaving the structure in the shape that it is now. As explained last month, the original deck, which literally sat over the sound, is all gone. All that is left is some wood piles buried deep into the sand. Couple of decks supporting piles washed away with Sandy. We studied the option of lifting and fixing the existing structure in place, however, the fact that it is built on unforgiving masonry structure, already in very poor shape, makes it very difficult and expensive process with too many unknowns. Accordingly, the intent is to demolish the existing structure and replace it with a new elevated one of wood frame construction. A two-story, 2,465 square feet house with no basement, in contrast with the original 2,488 square feet, 23 square feet less. That is the main difference with the original house. There will be no basement. The top of the piers of the new structure will be at elevation 17.25, which is 500-year base flat elevation plus one foot of freeboard. Even though the average grade is 4.3.
Sir, excuse me, one minute. Well, you were here last, you were here last month, right?
Yes, correct.
So everything you're saying right now, did you present last month?
Pretty much.
What was in question really last month? You don't have, you don't have to, you know, I don't want, I don't want to put you through a lot more than you have.
I appreciate that. The issue was that the access stair to the house was encroaching, was too close to the property line. It is still close to the property line, but we have moved it back to the body of the house.
The deck on the side of the house to, to minimum, right?
Yes, exactly. We made it to the minimum width as required by code. So we, we're still encroaching upon the setback, but this is necessary, obviously, to access an elevated house. So reviewing and to make the presentation short.
Boy, I'm not trying to shorten you up on your presentation.
No, this is fine. I mean, like you say, I've already, already made the presentation.
I wasn't here last month, and I, and I know a lot of people have already heard this, so.
Correct.
It's part of the record, and I think that they brought you back this evening to make some changes, which I hope you've made some changes, then that's what you're here for.
So we were, we were here by requesting a variance to the following sections. I just want to be official again. Section 3.1.4.1, east front yard setback to 4.09 feet where 10 feet is required by the zoning regulations. Section 4.14, east deck to .34 feet where eight feet is permitted. East deck and stairs to 4.26 feet where eight foot is permitted to construct a new single-family house. This proposal contrasts with the one submitted a month ago in that the access stair has been moved tight against the body of the house, like I said. Everything else is pretty much the same. I mean, I can go ahead and repeat it, but like you say, it's all in the records. Mr. Soto observed last time that the stairs were, could be moved to this, closer to the house to, to have it less, and to encroach less upon the setbacks, which is what we're doing. So in conclusion, we're, oh, the, by the way, the hardship obviously is the fact that we have two front lots. This is a corner lot. It's already a small lot, and we're, even though we are, we have pushed the house back to comply with the 32 Field Court side of the house, the opposite, the perpendicular side is, we have no option but to encroach upon the 10-foot setback, as I just described. So in conclusion, we were here by requesting approval of these variances from this board to pursue the work outlined tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right, questions? Go ahead, Mr. Soto.
Okay, I have two questions for you. One is, what is your hardship? And the second is, the walkway along the side of the house, what is going to be the finished measurement on that? Because I don't think that number got changed on the plan here.
The, what was the first one? I'm sorry.
Why don't you give me the measurement of the walkway? The finished measurement to the outside of the rail?
I can give you a wall section. Is that plan any different than what you have in front of you, Mr. Soto?
Okay, so you got a three-foot walkway?
Exactly.
Yep. Perfect.
All right.
Yep. And the other one was?
Again, the hardship is, the zoning regulations make it impossible to build this house without the encroaching upon the setbacks, because it's a corner lot.
Any other questions? Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Anyone here opposed to this application? We're all set, Board? Okay, this hearing is closed. Are you satisfied with the changes that you heard this last month?
Yes, he changed the walkway to a three-foot clear walkway instead of it goes around, it's at least another eight inches last month, and he's moved those stairs in, and everything looks good. I'm satisfied with this.
Okay, we need a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Approval is based on the hardship of the corner lot.
They're motion to approve. We have a second on the motion. Ms. Ferrante?
With the motion.
Mr. Haberman?
With the motion.
Mr. Vassino?
With the motion.
Mr. Soto?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion. Passes. You're all set, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number four, 12-16 Orland, Orland Street, Zone R5, Donald Percet and Susan Percet owner, section three dash one dash four dash one, very side yard setback to 3.6 feet where four feet required to rebuild garage on same footprint. Map 29, block 564, parcel three.
Good evening, Don Percet. What we'd like to do is replace our current garage with a new one.
Sir, did you give your address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, 12 through 16.
What do you, what do you need, Meg?
He just wanted, he just did it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Go ahead, sir. Go ahead.
Yes, it's 12 through 16 Orland Street. And what we'd like to do is replace our current garage with a new one. The garage we currently have was built, we think, at least 60 years ago, built directly on the ground on wood. It's being sinking into the ground, rotting away, basically. And the interior floor where we parked the car is questionable at best. The new garage we'd like to put in would be built on a slab on exactly the same footprint. Now, at present, the front corner of the garage, as you know, is three point, three feet, six inches from the property line, which makes me six inches short. The property line on that side beers away from the garage, so as you get farther back on the garage, it falls in within the setback range. If we have to move the garage over, which I understand is a possibility, this causes problems for us. First of all, we have to remove and or replace the current sidewalk we had put in, and it would also limit our access to what we consider our backyard, but basically from the plot, you can see it's, we have two side yards because it's a corner lot. We use that backyard in the wintertime for boat storage, for our boat. Moving it over, I currently have, when I put the trailer back there, approximately four inches on each side of my trailer going back. If I move the garage over six inches, I'm out of luck. I won't be able to get clear. I'm pretty good, but I'm not that good. The other problem is the steps that come down from our side, from our back porch, which are in that area, were custom, we had them custom made several years ago, we'd have to rip those out if we wanted to continue to have access to the garage, to the backyard. So basically, we're, we're just trying to take what we have, update it, and leave it right where it is. There would be no visible change.
All right, the garage that's there, there's a garage there right now?
Yes, it is.
And why do you need this additional six inches? It's like you almost don't need a variance here.
Well, I don't, what we're trying to do is not move the garage, because if we move it over, we'd be moving it, if we were getting our driveway, we're moving it to the right, closer to the house, which cuts off this access to our other side yard.
Any other questions, Board?
It's going to be the same level. I mean, you're not going to add another dish, a floor to it.
We basically want it to look just like it looks now, except not falling down.
Okay, any other questions? No? Okay. Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Is there anyone here opposed to this application? All set? Okay, this hearing is closed. Ms. Ferrante?
I have no problem with this. It's going on the same footprint. It's, it's the same building. There's no change.
Anyone else? Mr. Soto?
No, I mean, it's the exact same one, and it's sinking, so he's got to do something, and it's probably cheaper to tear it down and build a new one than repair what's there and jack it up.
Okay. Don't seem to be in agreement. We need a motion.
I make a motion, a motion to approve.
Second.
Approval is based on the irregular lot line on that side of the garage, and if it was straight, he'd have no, he wouldn't need a variance, so.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second on the motion. Ms. Ferrante?
With the motion.
Mr. Haberman?
With the motion.
Mr. Vassino?
I'm with the motion.
Mr. Soto?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion. Passes.
Item number five, 28 Field Court, Nancy Rogers owner, section four dash one dash four, east, east deck projection to six feet where eight feet permitted, west deck projection to nine feet where four feet permitted to construct a deck for a single-family home. Map 28, block 574, parcel four.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Peter Crabtree. Live at 64 Stanley Street, New Haven, Connecticut. I'm here on behalf of Nancy Rogers. She has a single-family home at 28 Field Court, and it's been damaged by our nemesis recent storms, and she has decided to raise the house up. So there really aren't any issues with raising the house. It's going to stay in the same setback, just going to move it up. However, what they want to do is extend a deck around the front of the home. Originally, there was a concrete patio at great, but that got wiped out during tropical storm Sandy. So what I'm going to do is, pass, throw out a packet, and there's, there's like five different homes here that have had variances over the past that are in this neighborhood. But I'd like you to look at the very first one on the top that I'm going to pass up because it's, it's pictures of her house and her condition. So I'll pass these out right now, and then I'll continue the explanation. The first page simply shows the existing conditions of the home. If you drove by, that's what you'd see. Second page shows the setback from the beachside. That home has been destroyed. The gentleman that was here before you tonight, that's one of his homes there. And then the one that I want to draw your attention to is on page three here. And on page three, you'll see that there's some hurricane windows there, and below the windows, it's concrete block. So this, this property's been hit before, and they resorted to putting the block in there. When they raise this house up, they're going to retain those hurricane windows. So now the question becomes, well, why don't, why do we need this, why do we need this variance? Why don't we just make the deck the width of the home? Problem is, we can't have our cake and eat it, too. We've got these hurricane windows here. We can't use them as a doorway. So the only alternative, alternative, alternative is to put in a sliding glass door setup. And of course, that means that during storm events, you're going to get wave splashback. And you're going to say, well, wait a minute, we're raising the house up, we're up to the 500-year elevation. What are we talking about damage to the house? Well, I had one of these. It was a coastal area management report. It was at 2 Lawrence Court. It had a seawall in front of it, just the way this house did, and that issue came up. And what the state was telling us was that during these major storm events, you'll get damage to the second floor because... damage to the second floor because what happens, the waves hit the seawall out in the front, and they splash up. And so, by eliminating the need for having any sliding glass doors there, this house will be basically, symmetrically sealed against any moisture problem. So that's basically the reason why we're here tonight. Could we do it with sliding glass doors? Yes, but it just makes the house more vulnerable to storm damage. And of course, you keep hearing, well, you know, what, what's your hardship? Besides that point that I just made there, we're, we're on the shore, we can't move the lot, we're in a V-zone, or if we're in a flood zone, we can't change that, we're in a V-zone, so we're stuck, we've gotta raise the house up. So there's a number of unique situations here that are hardships, in my, in my opinion. And of course, the, the application, you know, states that, you know, what, what the distances are, and, and that, that's basically the presentation. I mean, you do have in front of you that, what the, what the deck looks like from the, from the shore, from the shoreline. And, and also, I would encourage the board members to look at the other properties that are in, in the handout there, because number, number fourteen, number thirty-six, number thirty-eight, and number forty, Field Court, are all applications for variances that included decks. And I have down there the respective decks, the respective times that the, the variances were actually approved, and there's, there's pictures that confirm the setbacks. And some of you may have been here, 'cause three of the four were in two thousand and thirteen. So it's not like we have a situation here where we're the only people on the block that have this condition, and, and has been waived in the past.
Okay. In looking at this, all right, you're gonna be raising the house, but the, the deck is, is right up to the property line. I mean, that's really the issue, that the whole rest of the property is taken up by the deck. The house sits in the middle here, twenty-two, twenty-two point two. What is the width, the actual width of the whole lot here?
The width, the width of the lot is thirty-five feet. So, that's the other constraining factor. We're not gonna, in, in raising the house up, not gonna reduce the size of the footprint. And of course, under the flood hazard regulations, we can raise the house up as is, and, and without any variances on that part. But, you know, to get a deck to go around to the front there, or around the back, if you're toward the beachside, you know, we need three foot six, and it, it puts us over there, very close to the line. And at one time-
Yeah, we're at point, we're at point six.
Correct.
And point nine. I mean, the whole lot is taken up with the deck.
Yeah, basically, but it, but you, but you have to have that much width, you know, for the deck, otherwise, it's not, it's not according to code. And there's no issue going toward the water, it's only along the side of the home.
Any other questions for Mr. Crabtree?
Could you state how it's not according to code on the deck, on the sides of the deck? I wanna hear some more on that.
Well, it's three feet, six inches, so you, you, you can't have a deck.
Okay, but if you look at the left side on your survey here, the left side of the house, the stairs come up, and then it looks to me like the jo, the deck is kicking towards the property line another three feet. Why is that doing that?
That was the-
That's not code.
If, if in your opinion, you wanna reduce it down to three foot six, that's up to you. You know, that's the way the designer made it up.
And also, those stairs could be budding the house. It looks to me like you have about a foot or a foot and a half in there between the stairs and the house. That would get you closer over, so you're, and, and the same thing on the other side of the house, the, the deck is beyond the, the width of the stairs, if you notice how it's drawn.
Right, it's, it's three foot, six inches, that's correct.
The stairs have to be three feet by code, and the deck, the deck is bigger. And I don't know what the, I can't scale anything on here, and there's no measurements.
There's a, there's a measurement, if, if they passed out on the roll set of-
I looked on your deck plan here, too.
Street of plans, it's three foot six on that big roll set that was prepared by John Grant.
On this, this plan here? I couldn't find anything on that. I couldn't find a width here. Three foot, yeah, but what's the width of the stairs?
Well, this would be six inches, you know, it's gotta have thirty-six.
But this here is what I'm talking about here, in this space here, we just made the last guy do it, move these over to the house, so, you know, now you have more room here.
I mean, it makes, makes a difference, you know, my suggestion is just give us a variance based on the thirty-six inches, and we won't have to come back again.
Well, we can't do that, you have to-
We can't do that. If there's gonna be a compromise on this, we'll leave the, I'll, I'll table this, and, and you can come back next month, and, and we would look at it again. We, we can't make a decision right now on if we do this, or if we do that, we have to have it.
Or Joe, do we deny without prejudice?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me ask you another question. If you took that door, it's in the same room, and you put it on the back of the house, you wouldn't need this walkway on the right side of the house at all.
Right, but now you've got, you won't be a slider, but you're gonna have a door there, and the door, again, is vulnerable to, you know, leakage and wind, everything, and that's the reason why we wanna eliminate any doors or any sliders on that side of the home that's the most vulnerable to the wave conditions.
Yeah, but you're raising the house, so you shouldn't have, be affected.
Right, but remember what I said, there's a seawall in front of this particular home, and when the waves hit that seawall, they splash up beyond that sixteen-foot mark. And the only reason I know that was because we had that coastal area management report that went in at, at number two Lawrence Court, and that became an issue. And the homeowner said, you know what, I want the seawall there, I don't wanna take it out. Because the state said, you know what, let's just let the water go through, and the homeowner said, no. And it wasn't a mandate from the state, it was a suggestion. And that's, that's the reason why the, the designer here, who happens to be a building official in Bridgeport of all places, he eliminated that, because it, it seals the house from the, you know, the, the storm damage in the future.
I disagree with that. I mean, every beach house has sliders on the water, and I mean, they make 'em good now, they're watertight.
How does, how does that pertain to the, the size of the deck? I mean, it doesn't, we're talking about how the water would splash up onto it, it doesn't matter if it's smaller or bigger.
Right, but if it, if there's no opening there, then, then the house isn't damaged. It's when you have to put an opening there, whether it's for a door that opens on hinges, or it's a slider, that's where you, that's where the house is still vulnerable. And this way, we're just closing that off completely, and the only way we'll access it is around from the side of the house, either the left or the right.
Okay, at issue here, though, is really the size of the deck. So, any other questions for Mr. Crabtree? Go ahead.
I guess, my question is, there was no deck here originally, so why do I need a wraparound deck around all of it? I mean, that, that's where I'm going, if we're-
There was no deck there originally?
That's what I heard. Is that a correct statement? I, if I'm wrong, I'd like to know that.
Originally, there was, they didn't need a deck because they had a concrete patio that went around the home. And you can see from the pictures that the patio was wiped out, that was, it was a concrete patio, and, and that the storm event took it out, and that's not, that's not gonna be replaced. They normally would prefer that you not put concrete back.
Yeah, I would just like to see that deck made smaller up there, and the stairs moved over to the right of the house.
Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Anyone here opposed to this application? Please come forward if you're opposed. Good evening, just state your name and your address, please.
My name is Susan Riordan, and I own the house next door at twenty-six Field Court. We have been there over thirty years. We've had the property surveyed several times by Andy-
Excuse me, we just, can you just pull that microphone just a little closer? Thank you very much.
Is that better?
Yeah, we can hear you better now.
Thank you. We've had the property surveyed earlier when we owned the house, we had it done again in two thousand and four, when our neighbor was having theirs done, just to get it done. And then we had it done again in two thousand and thirteen. When this came up with the Rogers, we asked Danny Flanagan to come out again and survey it and leave the marks where we could see them. And I have the survey. We are raising our house as well because of the damage that was done down there. We've already gotten our permits and, and things have begun. Our home is being raised, we didn't go for any variances. We are doing a deck out front over the water. And I asked, when we got the notice from planning and zoning, that they wanted to put those decks around, we were really, really alarmed because their house, the Rogers' house is five feet, one-half inch away from the property line. I have these pictures, would you like them? You can have.
Can you just repeat?
Yeah, just, just repeat what you handed me.
That, that is a picture of our property line, and that's Andy Flanagan's tape measure, that's his shoe and his glove. And it's showing that the Rogers' house is exactly five feet, a half an inch from our property now. If he were to build that deck, he would be right on, oh, I should go back and talk-
You can, go ahead.
You could, yeah.
You can go back.
If they were to build that deck, they'd be right on the property line and looking in our windows. And everybody down there tries to maintain their own privacy, even though the houses are close together. But this deck would make it almost impossible to have any privacy if they could look right into our windows. There's no hardship demonstrated because he's got, they have doors on the other side of the house and stairs to get in and out of their house, even when it's raised, that's where they're putting the stairs and the deck. They don't need a deck on our side of the property.
Okay, you mentioned this survey, property survey, do you feel that your property lines are right where they should be?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, so you're satisfied with that?
Right, but what we're concerned about is if that deck is built, it'll be right on, well, right on the private, the property line. I also have a house, a picture showing our houses after the hurricane. You can see how close together they are, and you can have this picture, too. I also have Andy Flanagan's card.
Whose card is that, please? The surveyor? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Anyone else speaking in opposition to this, to the plans here? No one else? Okay. Mr. Crabtree, you can rebut if you would like.
I don't think there's a dispute on the property lines here. You know, we admit what the side yard setbacks are, and that they're close, and on that side, that's pretty much what we need if we're gonna get access. But I'll also say that on the privacy issue, I mean, that side deck is for access. Nobody's gonna sit there and stare through somebody's window. I mean, I, but, and also, I do wanna point out that the house was built in nineteen thirty-five, and that this is Ro, Mr. and Mrs. Rogers at the time bought the property from the next-door neighbor, not this neighbor, but the person who's here earlier tonight, Englander. And so, they've, and she's owned the house since nineteen ninety-nine. So, that's, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? None? Okay. This hearing's closed. Well, the deck, I, I feel the deck is actually way too big for the property. If, if we deny this without prejudice, I mean, we would have to have a, something really reasonable brought back, or we'll still be sitting in the same position. Go ahead, Mr. Sota.
Well, I personally feel that the deck on the right side, which was the woman's side of the house, I, I don't think that needs to be there. And I definitely think you could put a slider in the back and solve that entire problem there. I think the stairs should go over to the, to the house, touch the house, and cut, and make that side deck in line with the stairs, and then I'd have no problem with this.
I agree with that.
Yep, I, I think that we hope that those suggestions are taken to heart when this proposal is brought back.
There's plenty of companies that make great sliders out there, that you can get a hurricane slider, and it'll never leak.
Okay, we need a motion, deny without prejudice, I think.
I make a motion to deny without prejudice.
Second? Motion to deny without prejudice. Ms. Ferrante?
With the motion.
Mr. Haberman?
With the motion.
Mr. Vassino?
With the motion.
Mr. Sota?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion, denied without prejudice.
Item number six, Six Silver Street, Zone R five, William Zabel, owner, section nine dash two dash one, appeal the decision of the Director of Land Use regarding permit two five fifteen seven ninety-eight, map twenty-seven, block four five four, parcel four and five.
How about the house file, the, the house copy go over to Stephen? How about if the house copy goes over to Stephen? We all set?
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just for the record, my name is Thomas Lynch. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Lynch, Trimbickie, and Boynton, and my office is located here in Milford at sixty-three Cherry Street. And I've been retained to represent William and Marshall Zabel, who have come here tonight and seated in the front row. My clients are the owners of property located at ten Silver Street here in Milford. And a application has been filed on their behalf to actually do something that I'm not normally in this position of doing, but I'm doing it tonight because I think it's the right thing to do. I've met with them and reviewed the file for the permit that was issued for the construction or the renovation of one of the structures at Six Silver Street. So, we've brought this application to you tonight to appeal the decision of the Director of Permitting and Land Use, who issued a permit on March third of this year for the construction that's going on on that site. So just at the outset, I have passed out to each of you a series of exhibits that I'm gonna be making reference to. But I think that it's clear that the issuance of this permit violates section six point two of our zoning regulations. I'm also going to be citing a recent state appellate court case that is exactly in line with the situation, and it's a, it's a very good dissertation and discussion as to what procedure one should follow through in the event that you want to either seek to expand a non-conforming structure or a non-conforming use. But interestingly enough, on this site, we have both. The property that's located at Six Silver Street is actually one lot in conjunction with the adjoining property at eight hundred East Broadway. And I had to smile when I walked in this evening because my good friend and client, Brian Lee, was here with his wife Kathy, seeking a minor adjustment to their deck, which you approved, it was item number one on your agenda. It was item number one on your agenda. But if you all recall, between 2014 and 2015, I appeared before this board three times seeking variances to do exactly what the owner of this property has been permitted to do by Mr. Griffith, by the issuing of the permit that he's done. So interestingly enough, this parallels not only the case that I'm going to be talking to you about shortly in Branford, but it also parallels a recent case that you all sat on this board and sat through three public hearings when we brought variances to expand Mr. Lee's property at 41 Melba Street. And if you recall, he had the same situation. He had two non-conforming structures on a beach lot on Melba Street. And what he sought to do after Sandy and Irene was to renovate the shore house and to allow the cottage that is on Melba Street to remain. And you know your own decision. You voted to deny my applications that I brought on Mr. Lee's behalf because it was the expansion of a non-conforming use. And what we have here at 800 East Broadway and Six Silver is not only a non-conforming use, but also non-conforming structures. So clearly, if you read, and I've made a copy in our handout, Section 6.2 of our zoning regulations, and I'm going to read it for the record, Mr. Chairman, just so that we do have a record of this, but Section 621 of our zoning regulations states that "No non-conforming use of land shall be enlarged, extended, or altered, and no structure or part thereof devoted to a non-conforming use shall be enlarged, extended, constructed, reconstructed, or structurally altered, except in changing the use to one which is allowable in the zoning district in which such use is located, except in the case of a single-family home. No non-conforming use of a structure shall be extended to occupy land outside the structure or space in another structure." So what we have here, if you look at the maps, it's part of your package, when Mr. Paxton, who's the current owner of the property, came into the zoning office to seek the permits, the map that's on file shows that there's two structures on this property. So clearly, a two-family use in a single-family zone. This is... This property is located...
Is that in our packet? What you're talking about, the structures?
I assumed that it was. I just assumed that this application before you tonight would include any of the items that were in the Six Silver Street file. Well, Mr. Chairman...
There's... Mr. Chairman, there's a survey in the file that shows the parcel and the two buildings.
I have the file here, Tom, if you want to have a look.
Well, I can reference it. I mean...
Do we need it?
You don't need it. You don't need it. There is a survey in file, believe me. And the survey in the file shows the existing site conditions. And what is existing, this property is located at the intersection of East Broadway and Silver Street. There is a two-story residence that's located on East Broadway, which is addressed as 800 East Broadway. And then there's the structure that's on Silver Street that's addressed as Six Silver Street. And again, referencing the packet that I gave you, I printed out from Vision Appraisal the square footage and the date of construction of both those houses to show that, in fact, they were built in 1920, before the institution of our zoning regulations. And based upon the legend that Paul Stowell has supplied with the survey, clearly, the lot is non-conforming. It's 2,909 square feet, where 5,000 square feet is required in an R5 zone. The lot width is non-conforming. It's 30 feet in width, where 50 feet is required in that zone. And the front and side yard setbacks are non-conforming. So what Mr. Paxton did, he came into the office, and over the counter, a permit was issued for second story, a second level, to be added to the rear house, expanding a non-conforming structure and expanding a non-conforming use. And again, without berating the point, it clearly violates Section 621 of our zoning regulations. Now, Section 624 of the zoning regulations provides that you can apply for a variance. Section 624 says, notwithstanding Section 621, 622, 623, a variance, and I've supplied you with the 2011 version, and if you flip to the second page in September of 2013, the language was changed because the word "shall" was changed to "may." Because if you read it the way that it was printed in 2011, if you apply for a variance, it makes it sound like it shall be approved. And of course, this was picked up and through a zone regulation change approved by the Planning and Zoning Board, the word "shall" was changed to "may." But clearly, the regulation provides that if you want relief from the zoning regulations as they apply to not expanding a non-conforming use or a non-conforming structure, you have relief. And the relief is to come before this board. And based upon our recent Supreme Court case, Verillo versus the Branford Zoning Board of Appeals, I would smile and say it's very unlikely that if a variance that you granted was ever challenged in court, it would very unlikely be upheld because that recent case has held that any expansion of a non-conforming structure without a clear hardship that relates to the property itself is illegal. So I'm not even going to the next step and arguing the next step, what would happen if Mr. Paxton came before you and applied for a variance. I'm just saying, he should have applied for a variance to do what he wants to do to this property. Giving him an over-the-counter permit was not right. And unfortunately, I hate to use the word "not legal," but it wasn't legal. The last part of my exhibit that I've handed to you is a printout of a 2003 case that is exactly in line with what's presented here to you tonight. The case is Monroe versus the Zoning Board of Appeals of the town of Branford. And in that case, there was a garage that someone wanted to put a second level on to create living space over the garage. And I leave it to you to peruse the case. It's only an eight-page decision. But the court went into great detail, speaking about the specific language of the Branford zoning regulation, which is exactly the language of 641 of our zoning regulations. It reads exactly the same way. And in this case, the Connecticut appellate court, on appeal of a case that was filed in New Haven Superior Court, the appellate court ruled that the zoning enforcement officer is not empowered to give a permit to someone to expand a non-conforming use or a non-conforming structure without applying for a variance. It's clear. It's in the regulation. And I can't argue it any clearer or more succinctly to you than that. I have all due respect for Mr. Griffith, but in this case, giving a permit to allow for the expansion of the second building on this property was illegal. And my clients have been injured by it. My clients own the property next door at 10 Silver Street, and very clearly, putting a second floor on that building will cut off their view to the water. It's interesting, if you look at page five of the decision, if you look at the decision that I handed to you, at the top right corner, it deletes each page out of eight. And if you look at the bottom of page five of the decision, and again, for the record, I'm reading directly from Judge Dupont's decision, she writes, "Nonconformities prevent uniformity with surrounding areas and can affect the value of neighboring property. A vertical extension of a building by adding a second story can change and affect the amount of air or light between buildings and may detract from the aesthetic value of a neighborhood. The addition of a second story is not a negligible or cosmetic change from the original nation... Nature of the nonconformity. The bulk of the building has been increased in quantity and dimension, thereby intensifying the nonconformity. The second story provides a significant additional amount of enclosed space within the confines of the nonconforming footprint, causing a substantial increase in the nonconformity." Going two paragraphs down, the judge renders her decision, and she says that "The judgment is reversed and the case is remanded." The sentence of above that reads, "The certificate should not have been issued to the defendant without a variance." And that's the case here. So with all due respect again to Mr. Griffith, I'd ask that you overturn the decision that he made on March 3rd to issue a permit to add a second level to the rear structure on this property. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Lynch? No questions? Okay. Anyone else speaking on this appeal? The land use director, I don't... I don't believe he's here. Oh, okay, Mr. Harris.
My name is Stephen Harris. I'm Milford Zoning Enforcement Officer. I have been asked by Director Griffith to read the following into the record. Quote, "The Department of Permitting and Land Use decision is being appealed for its application of the Milford Zoning Regulation 6.3.2, which states, '6.3.2 enlargement, extension, or alteration. Structures failing to meet any requirement of these regulations other than use, including the lack of required parking or loading spaces, shall not be enlarged, extended, or altered if the result will be an increase in nonconformity. Historically, the interpretation of this regulation has been such that a zoning permit may be issued in connection with a nonconforming structure if the specific nonconformity is not being impacted. For example, a house that is nonconforming as to setback may be elevated or vertically expanded, providing the nonconforming setback is not further encroached. Specifically, in the case of Six Silver Street, the nonconformity is created by the location of the existing structure's proximity to the property line and its encroachment into the setbacks required by Table 3.1.4.1 of our zoning regulations. The proposed work, a second-story addition built on the existing exterior walls, does not propose changing the existing distance from the property line and thereby does not change the existing nonconforming setback, and therefore does not increase the nonconformity.'" Close quote.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Lynch, do you have any comments on what you had just heard?
I go back to my opening comment when I stated that this involves not just a nonconforming structure, but a nonconforming use. So clearly, putting the second floor on a second structure that is already being put to use, that is not conforming with the R5 zone, that's the first point that I wanted to make. And then, secondly, what Stephen read from Mr. Griffith's email is in direct contradiction from the language of the Monroe case that I just read to you. Monroe said that a vertical expansion, even if you are not expanding the footprint, creates an enlargement of the structure and thus is illegal.
Any other questions for Mr. Lynch? Go ahead.
That case you just cited, that was in Monroe, Connecticut?
No.
Branford.
The plaintiff's name was Monroe.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
Name was Monroe. Any other questions for Mr. Lynch? No? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lynch. I'd like to have some discussion on this. I'm leaning toward keeping this hearing...
Mr. Chairman, is the hearing still open, or...
Excuse me?
Are you going to leave the hearing open?
That's what I was about to say.
Okay.
I'd like to have some discussion and possibly leave this hearing open. I feel that there should be a variance on this property. I don't know how people seem to come in and just miss the zoning office, or if they have the authorization to go around the zoning officer. I personally feel it's... They might not be authorized to do it.
I mean, I totally agree. This definitely needs a variance, and it's exactly the same as the Melba Street case. And we made him change that house, and he wasn't able to expand those, so...
Ms. Ferranti?
We've seen this exact issue before. People have come before us to request variances for houses that were nonconforming into a setback. They add another... It's not increasing the encroachment into the setback, but it is going vertical. And we've seen exactly this issue before, and it's always been a request for variance.
You need a variance whether you're going up, you know, or out, you know? If it's already a house that needs a variance, you have to... You have to do that. So...
Go ahead, Mr. Soda.
I mean, we could leave it open and...
Mr. Chairman, if I can interrupt just for a second? I would encourage the board to engage in discussion during the discussion phase and not while the public hearing is still open.
If we're going to leave it open, or table it?
If the board is inclined to leave this open, then I would entertain a motion to leave it open.
And then we'll discuss it later?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Oh, we can stop right here if you'd like, and we can leave it open.
I don't know. It's kind of... I think we could settle this tonight. I mean, I don't know. Every time we've asked for Mr. Griffith, he never seems to show up, so...
Well, I personally feel that maybe he could come by and justify his reasoning. So I'd like to leave it open. I'd like a motion to leave it open. You have to make a motion to leave it open, don't you? Yes.
All right. Then I'll make a motion to leave the hearing open to next month, and I request, formal request, to have Mr. Griffith show up and not just give us a letter.
Okay. It's plain enough. Do you need a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to keep this hearing open. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. This hearing is open until next month.
Can I ask a procedural question? I know the hearing...
Go ahead.
The hearing's closed. So the hearing was left open?
Yes.
All right.
We're not tabling it. We just want to leave it open.
Right. So in essence, we would need to come back then to rebut anything else that Mr. Griffith would say?
We're not satisfied with the statement. It's like, I would like a reason on why we circumvent the zoning office.
Then my clients have to come back out and have to pay me to come back out?
Mr. Chairman, I would encourage everybody to cease talking about this since it was settled open to next month.
So the public hearing itself is left open?
The public hearing is still to be left open for this next month?
Thank you.
Sure.
Well, Joe, we didn't vote on it yet, did we?
No. We did. We're all set.
So we could still... We could still put the rest...
Mr.... Mr. Item number seven, 209 Second Avenue, Zone R10, Steven Kittle, architect for Francis Marsilio. Owner, Section 3-1-4-1, very side yard setback to 6.4 feet, where 10 feet required, map nine, block 81, parcel 19.
Good evening. My name is Steve Kittle. I'm an architect, 49 Beardsley Parkway in Trumbull, Connecticut. And I'm presenting on behalf of the owner, Francis Marsilio, who resides at 209 Second Ave, and we're requesting a variance to Section 3.1.4.1, side yard setback, 10 feet required to 6.4 feet requested in an R10 zone. We wish to add a five-foot by eight-foot addition underneath an existing roof that covers a porch and wood deck. The existing wood deck will be slightly reconstructed just to accommodate the construction of the new space, but will remain within the footprint. Again, our property is located in an R10 zone in a nonconforming lot size and width, which constitutes a hardship for the request. Thank you.
What are you doing? You're squaring off that corner of the building?
There's an existing porch roof on the back, and we'd like to enclose that and make it part of the enclosed heated space for an expanded dining room. I have a little picture, if I could bring it up to you, just to show the space.
Okay. Sure. It's... Okay. It's with us? Okay. And I'll pass it around.
See this little... Yeah. Little corner here? Okay.
There's a corner there that's open. They just want to close that in.
That would be the northeast corner of the building.
There's a corner there that's open. They just want to close that in.
That would be the, that would be the northeast corner of the building.
Okay, any, any other questions for this gentleman? Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Anyone here opposed to this application? Any questions? Any word, any more questions? Okay, this hearing's closed.
Thank you.
Whoa, whoa, go ahead. Do you have a question?
I just want to see the state of your hardship.
The hardship is a nonconforming lot of narrow, narrow width lot.
Are you satisfied? Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, this hearing's closed.
There's absolutely no increase in, in anything, right? Oh, talking to, oh, sorry, talking to you. Yeah. And there's no increase in, 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 in nonconformity, either going up or sideways. This is just a square off, so I don't see no issue with it.
Yeah, it already has a roof on it, so I mean...
Right.
We need a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second?
Approval is based on the hardship being the narrowness of the lot.
We have a motion to approve, and we have a second on the motion. Ms. Ferrante?
With the motion.
Mr. Haberman?
With the motion.
Mr. Vassino?
With the mo...
Mr. Sota?
With the motion.
And I'm with the motion. It passes. Okay. So Meg, what happened here? We can just about see these things at the bottom of the sheet. Did we run out of ink? It's like...
Oh, no, you know...
No? New, new business? Do we have any new business? No?
It's the Paper Reduction Act, sir.
It's the Paper Reduction Act.
Okay. How about a staff update? Anything new? Do you have any? Yeah? Nothing? Nothing? Staff update. Acceptance from, from minutes from, says February here, this would be the March meeting.
On minus, it says.
Okay. Acceptance of the minutes from the March 8, 2016 meeting.
They look fine by me.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. Approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? None? Applications for next month. We have a few things going on next month, don't we? We have...
We have a couple of...
Two that are tabled, and one that's open, so we already have three.
You beat me to it.
Okay. A motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Second, this, this meeting is adjourned.